Okay, at this time, I will call the meeting to order. I would like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, February the first, two thousand and twenty-one. At this time, if everyone will stand for a moment of silence, please, and then we will proceed with the pledge of allegiance. Okay, we will pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I would like to welcome you to tonight's meeting. At this time, I'm calling the meeting to order. The first item, we have public input, and Jay Hicks is here to speak during public input. You can come forward. You have three minutes, Ms. Hicks.
Thank you. I wanted to speak to the board and Dr. Joseph about the condition of our tennis courts at the high school. I know this is something that most of you are already familiar with. They are in bad repair. And while I don't have a student at the school or playing, just, I'm coming as a citizen tonight, not a teacher, just to express my concern for the condition. I have played on the courts when we've had the round robin fundraisers, and there are a lot of worn spaces. There are numerous cracks all over all six courts, and I'm concerned on a few levels, three in particular, I just wanted to address with you. One of them is the safety of the courts with those cracks that run throughout all the courses, through the courts, rather. There are several that are as much as an inch wide. The second, and that's the most important issue, the second, though, is that with courts in that condition, it's not really conducive to good tennis instruction or good tennis competition. From a practical standpoint, courts are supposed to be flat surfaces. They're completely flat all the way across, so that when you hit the ball, you can count on it hitting a flat surface, not a crack. And when you're on the receiving end, you can count on the ball reacting the way it's supposed to when it hits the court's surface. And that's not the case in our courts at the high school because of the number of cracks that are in the course. This happens. It happens to tennis courts. As grounds settle, that's nothing unusual, except it is kind of an extreme case at our school that we haven't done anything to address it. We have a good tennis team response this year. I think we have maybe about sixteen on the team this year. And I would love to see, because I played tennis in high school. That was the one sport I played, and it is a sport that special to me. I'd love to see our tennis team thrive. But I really think we need to do something. The third thing is, just honestly, it's embarrassing when we have teams from other counties come play us and see the condition of our courts when we're a home team and we have other teams coming to play. It doesn't reflect well. And so I'm not coming just to complain about them. I do want to offer that if there's something I can do, I've talked to Billy Washington, who is also very concerned about this as well, a clerk of the court, and he and I are both willing to be on any kind of a committee to research what our options are. We're not naive about the cost. We know that a total dig up and redo would be in six figures, but there are resurfacing options that could just go in five figures, and we know there would need to be fundraising involved. But I just think it's something that we really need to consider and all get behind, if y'all are willing. Again, I'm not just here to complain and run. I'm willing to be involved in finding solutions and working with administrations at high school and with you, Billy is also. But obviously, it's the school district's property, and, you know, we need your support, your involvement, your blessing on it. That's really all I have to say about it, but thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. And that is an issue. That's an issue that has been for several years. I want to say back, probably three, four years ago, we had looked into it and with resurfacing the courts. And like you said, a total redo would be close to a hundred thousand, but the resurfacing was around thirty, if my memory serves me correct. And I think it's a great idea that we have some type of, like, maybe get together a group of people who are, who work toward trying to raise the money in some way to do it. Because I know at one time here in Madison, tennis was, there was a very active tennis scene with people who played socially. And maybe that could be something we could do again. I know that we have the only tennis courts in the county at this, or there's some at least City Hall or one, or two, maybe.
We have two at the right part now.
And at the right part. But I mean, I do think, because we, I mean, I want us to be able to continue to have a tennis team and offer that to students. And I agree with you, it is embarrassing when other schools come here to play. And there is a safety issue back, probably, this was way prior to Ms. Joseph, the, I had gone out to the high school, and the weeds were up very high. And, and the issue with that is, when, when we let it get to that point, when you try to kill it and then pull it up, then you pull up tennis court. Because there are big gaps within the, within the court. So I, I understand all that you've said, and I guess our next step is working toward trying to find a group of people who would be interested in the same interests that you have. And we have to try to work toward raising money, because at this point, with our budget, there's no money that we would have to put out toward redoing tennis courts.
Right.
We have a track also at this time that needs to be replaced. But again, that's, that's very, very expensive, too. But again, if, if parents are willing to help and the community, then I'm all for that. I think it's something that would be nice.
Well, I'm willing to help as, as much as I can financially, but also in, in seeking out and working with others in the community. I just, but we do need your blessing, your involvement, your, we need the board to be part of it, obviously.
I'm all for it. But I've actually was approached a couple of years ago, since I've been on the board. And I went out there, and I was appalled. I've never seen anything like it. I took, as maybe I was trying to find the pictures. I think they're buried in the, you know, on the phone. But it's, it's a disgrace. And absolutely, and I don't know how our sports teams, I mean, it's a sport at the high school. So I'm not, are they all raising money independently? And I mean...
But this would be a sport that doesn't really generate money. It's one of your non-generators that has to rely on, you hate to say, but football to carry your sports that really don't generate attendance. And, I mean, you may have parents to come, but you're not having a gate where you could have money to draw from to, to like, do repairs. So your other big generators are having to support or pay for these nine that really don't, your, your track and field, your tennis, your weightlifting, your any other that really doesn't generate a crowd, your other athletic department is having, and that's, that's where the downfall. But I'm willing to, to help in any way I can. And I guess we could, we could get and maybe start up, like, a meeting or something, a group of people, and try to expand it or brainstorm. I mean, I'll be glad to get in touch with you and Mr. Washington, and maybe we could start something and see.
That would be great.
And anyone else who would like to join in is welcome to, who has any ideas of how to, to, to raise money for it. When I was in high school, I was on the tennis team here also. And, but at that point, we weren't even fortunate enough to have tennis courts. Ours were at the college. That's where we played all of our matches back then. But, no, I do think it's something that the high school needs, and I'd be glad to help in any way. So we'll get in touch.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public input? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we skipped number two, which is amendments to the agenda.
Okay. Sorry about that. I am moving two-point-one, employee actions, to five-point-four, employee actions. So I'm amending the agenda.
That's going to be, what did you say?
Five-point-four. Okay. We will move to the consent items. Four-point-one, the minutes. Four-point-two, Title I, Part C, migrant education program, amendment two, is sixty-three thousand seventy-seven dollars. Four-point-three fundraisers. There are two at Madison County Central School, a catalog merchandise fundraiser and a pork loin fundraiser, which is now through February the tenth. I think the twelfth is when it will be delivered. And four-point-four is a school calendar for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment about the calendar?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want you to note the historic dates on the calendar. This year, we tried a staggered opening, and the school staff, they appreciated that. So we put a staggered opening back in the calendar for next year. That, August tenth, we'll have pre-K through one, sixth grade and ninth grades. And then on the twelfth, all the students will be coming to school.
Okay. Yeah, that, I do think that worked out well with the stagger time. Okay, with that being said, items four-point-one through four-point-four under the consent items. Is there a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, seconded by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor, I will call for a vote. Ms. Bell?
Approve.
Ms. Gibson?
Approve.
Ms. Williamson?
Approve.
And I approve. Four, zero, Ms. Bishop. Mr. Carroll is absent tonight due to his mother's passing, so we send our condolences to he and his family. But I forgot to mention at the, at the beginning that he wasn't here, so sorry about that. But it's four, oh, Ms. Bishop. Okay, items five-point-one, personnel changes. Dr. Blue?
Good evening, Brother Chair and board members and everyone. I ask that the board approve personnel changes five-point-one at this time, please.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the personnel changes?
I need a motion to approve the personnel change.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? There's no further discussion. I will call for a vote. Ms. Bell?
Approve.
Ms. Gibson?
Approve.
And Ms. Williamson?
Approve.
And I approve also four, oh, Ms. Bishop.
Thank you, Brother Chair.
Thank you. The next item, the Microsoft quote, Mr. Goyet, or Ms. Joseph?
Okay, Mr. Goyet will answer.
This is our yearly volume license agreement with Microsoft, license off their products on all our district, for all.
There's Word and Excel and all that?
Yes, and as well as the actual operating system.
And we're bringing it to you before you, even though it's an annual thing, is because of the amount.
Okay, with that being said, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the Microsoft quote.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell. Is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion. It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Bell. Ms. Bell?
Approve.
Approve. Ms. Gibson?
Approve.
Ms. Williamson?
Approve.
Four, zero, Ms. Bishop, for approval. And I approve, four, zero. Five-point-three, contract for annual roof service.
Okay, I'll do that. Okay, if you notice, we've got a contract for annual roof services. What this is, they recently renovated the high school and installed a new roof. But without really close inspection, you'd know some of the ten is mismatched. And for what we pay, we think we deserve a matched ten. But to do that, they will have to remove the ten. And so thanks for, to Mr. Ginn, he worked out an agreement with the company. We will go with the mismatched ten, but they will give us a free roof inspection every year. Now, if something is wrong, there will be a cost to us, but we, we know we'll get the roof inspected every year for the next twenty years.
Or it'll be covered in warranty.
I'll be covered in the warranty.
Okay.
Does that make sense, though? Because the tenant, it's not a, as I understand, it's not a structural problem.
No, it's not a structural problem. It's just appearance, cosmetic.
And so this was a good way to get some value.
I don't think you were superintendent when that was happening, were you?
No, no.
Because I don't think I would have accepted it, actually, because it just shows something that wasn't done properly.
Well...
But what can we do about that now?
At this point, it's one of the...
We can ask them to tear it apart, but, you know, whenever you tear something and put it back, you always have some iffy. And so it's working now. We don't want to break it. We feel that.
I understand.
Better bang five bucks if we can get free roof inspections out of it.
And just the break and continuity of trying to educate students. And with the COVID, I mean, I don't know that you'd want to go through that again with just what we went through back when we were renovating. So with that being said, is there a motion to approve the contract for the annual roof service?
I move to approve the contract for the annual roof service.
It's been, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. If there's no further discussion, is there further discussion? If there's none, Ms. Bell?
Approve.
Ms. Gibson?
Approve.
Ms. Williamson?
Approve.
And I, too, approve, four, oh, Ms. Bishop. Okay, items, item five-point-four, employee action. Ms. Joseph?
Okay, Mr. Chair, on Monday of last week, we had an incident at one of our outline schools where one of our employees, charges were filed against one of our employees for child neglect, child abuse. Anyway, Child Protective Services come in, okay? Proper procedure says if that happens, me as superintendent should suspend the person with pay for up to ten days until, until the next board meeting, okay? On Monday, I suspended the person with pay. And I've done some research. Child Protective Services is looking into the case, and they will be interviewing the students, and they will be interviewing the person, and they hope to conclude the situation this week. And at this time, I'm recommending that she, she will remain off until the case is closed. And if she return, upon her return, if she returns, I'm also, I'm going to recommend that she goes through introduction to behavior management class, and I'll give her a month or two to complete that. Now, at this time, all I can do is, she's suspended as of today with pay. For that to continue is in your ball. You can suspend her with pay until the conclusion of the investigation or without pay.
When will the ten days be up, Ms. Joseph?
Okay, my days are up at the board meeting, okay? The board can do it indefinitely until the end of the investigation. Am I correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, ma'am. The superintendent's suspension lasts for, until the next regular board meeting or ten days, whichever comes earlier. And so this all happened on the twenty-fifth. Today's the first, so the school board has to make a decision tonight as to what the school board wishes to do.
I just, I just want to, I mean, me, myself, speaking from past experiences, our past practice has been, we suspend without pay pending the results of the, what's found by DCF. If they're found innocent, then we back pay them with interest. And, but if, if they were to be found guilty, I mean, I think the reason that we have done for years of with the, without pay is if they were to be found guilty, at that point, they've been all, they've been being paid, how will you get your money at that point if they're no longer employees of ours? So our past practice for ones who maybe haven't been through this before is, we do suspend, we have suspended without pay pending the investigation, and then we, if they're found innocent or no charges, then we, we back pay them with interest. Okay, with that being said, is there a motion to what you want to do? I mean, it's up to you all.
Um, I...
So the motion's got to have two things. One is continue or don't continue the suspension. And then two, if you continue the suspension, with or without pay.
So there...
So you make a motion saying I, if you want to continue it, you'd say I move to continue the suspension and then with or without.
Okay, well, I will make the motion to continue the suspension.
And then you need to say with or...
Until the investigation is over.
And you need to say with or without pay.
I really hate to say it, but without pay, because that's the way we've done everybody else. I want to be uniform and fair to every employee.
Well, okay, so it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any further discussion?
As Ms. Suzie said, it's to be, it's, I like to go the way we've been doing it, let's put it that way, because she will get reimbursed when found innocent with interest.
Okay. Any, any other discussion?
How long does the investigation normally take?
I spoke with the DCF person. It will be concluded this week.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. It's been seconded by, I'm sorry, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson. It's been seconded by Ms. Gibson. All those in favor, Ms. Bell?
Approve.
Ms. Gibson?
Approve.
Ms. Williamson?
Approve.
And I approve, four, zero, Ms. Bishop. Okay, six-point-one, superintendent items.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I've got a few things. First thing, I would like to send my condolences to, offer my condolences to the Carroll family for the passing of their matriarch. And at each one of your seats, I've got this flyer about the broadband test that is being conducted by the county. As part of the CARES Act, if they've got our funds for, try to increase the broadband in these rural areas. And Mr. Dean, who's one of the, he's contracted with the county, he's writing a grant, and he needs us to try to go on this site and do this test run. I spoke with him today, and he says he need at least eight hundred people to try to visit his site. As of today, he had only had two hundred. And so I've shared it with this, all the school population, our students and their parents, and hopefully I'm sharing it with you, and you can share with your family and friends. And so, not at your work site, but at your home, go on and do this test. It won't take but a few seconds. Okay, next thing is, I have at your table an update on the Teacher of the Year addresses. When the foundation sent it out, they had omitted a name, it has, I misspelled a person's name, and your name is one of the few things that truly belonged to you. And so I've given you an updated list of that. The Teacher of the Year Virtual Banquet is still scheduled for the fourth. I can't give you any other details, but be listening out, be looking out somewhere online, they'll have it posted. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Hill, I didn't see you over there.
They're going to run it at seven o'clock on the fourth, and they'll announce who the Teacher of the Year is at that time. And we're going to put the link on our, on the district website, but it'll be our YouTube channel.
And one other thing, at the last meeting, Mr. Carroll spoke about us possibly doing a dashboard about the number of persons that have COVID and quarantined. We're having kind of a bit of a trouble getting updated current information, but I looked through the list today, as of today, okay? We have two staff members that's out with COVID. Now, we've got several students out at close contact and quarantined, but that's, that's changing by the minute. So that's, that's a real moving target, and I'm not ready to present that information to you till I can get a better handle on it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bell, do you have any comments or... No, okay, Ms. Gibson?
Okay, I'd also like to send my condolences to Mr. Carroll and his family and the death of his mother. I'd like to, again, congratulate the Teachers of the Year, SROs, and I look forward to the virtual banquet. I would rather have an in-person banquet, but considering the times, we have to do it this way. So congratulations to all.
Mr. Appleton, I thought you was asking me, was I going to have a comment on what Ms. Joseph said. I do have something to say.
Okay.
I was just sending my... I was just sending out my-
Why, are you finished, Ms. Gibson?
Yeah, I'm through.
Okay.
I was just sending out my condolences to Mr. Carroll and his family, and my thoughts and prayers are with him.
Okay.
And his family.
Is that all? Is that all you?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Williamson?
I do, would like to send Frankie my love and condolences and pray him for the comfort of he and all of his family. And I'd like to thank Ms. Joseph for all that she does for our district and every employee that we have and working in these time times. Thank you.
Okay, and I, too, would like to send my condolences to the Carroll family and the passing of Ms. Carroll. I want to also, again, congratulate all the Teachers of the Year and their banquet this Thursday evening. Also, the school-related personnel who were chosen at their specific site. I want to thank the McPhee Foundation and their Board of Directors for all their work, their continuous work throughout the year that they provide and the work that has been provided in putting together this banquet. Thank Ms. Hill for her work. She's on the, on the Board of Directors, and I thank you for that. I mean, that's a lot of work that we sit back and experience benefits of having a group of people who, who put their time in, in bringing all this together. And it is a lot of work, just with the many grants they provide to the schools, to the teachers, the social event like this. Not all districts do this. I mean, all your, your bigger districts do this, but we're probably the only small district our size that does such a production for the Teacher of the Year. And if you were to, if you were to look around to other small districts our size, we're the only one that would put on a production like it's normally put on at the high school. You would see it in bigger districts with several thousand students and fifty to a hundred schools in the district, but not a district of our size. So I do thank them for all their work and all of our district employees who serve in that capacity. I want to say that on January the twenty-seventh, I had the opportunity to go to the legislative delegation was here at the courthouse or in the annex, Representative Chough and Senator Osley, and we, Ms. Joseph was there, Ms. Gibson and myself, we all were there. And I expressed my concerns to the two representatives concerning, when school, with testing for this year, I expressed a concern that I hope that they consider possibly making this year our as a baseline for the district or for all districts, seeing that our last testing or point of test was in the spring of 2019. That's a long time since we've last tested. The only, at the elementary level, the only class that would have learning gains would be your fifth graders. Third don't have it just based upon being third graders, but fourth wouldn't have it. And again, I'm just really worried based upon us being out from the months from March until we started back to school. And then just the uncertainty of people having to quarantine like for the ten days, and some kids have had multiple quarantines, and to take into account that many of the students are not on grade level, so they're already behind before we even started, and to throw all this in the mix. I'm just afraid that it could be a disaster waiting to happen. And I just hope they, since we have talked about compassion, or that has, I hope that's like looked at, that we can use it as a baseline, and then next year, go for forward testing. They seemed receptive. We'll see. I'm just hopeful that they consider it. Ms. Joseph spoke that night to them also. I will be attending February the eleventh and the twelfth, the finance meeting, and Howie and the Hill School Board Finance. And again, congratulations to all the Teachers of the Year. That's a big accomplishment, especially in this day and time as a teacher. No one really knows unless you've been in the classroom. Teachers today compared to twenty years ago, it's night and day. I mean, they have to serve as social worker, parents, you name it, nurse, mental health counselor, you name it. What a teacher goes through today is no comparison ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, thirty years ago. There's no comparison. So the individuals who got this, they're above and beyond what teachers, what we expect that comes from a teacher. So again, I congratulate them, and that's all I have to say. And I hope everybody has a great week and tune in Thursday night for Teacher of the Year. I'm sure it'll be exciting. And see, congratulate all the nominees. Did you have anything, Mr. Attorney?
Nothing.
Okay. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, it's been, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Bell. All those in favor, Ms. Bell.
Approve.
Ms. Gibson.
Approve.
Ms. Williamson.
Approve.
And I, too, approve, four oh, Ms. Bishop.